And this meeting is being recorded. And we wish to do our little blurb there on.
Remote participation?
Yes.
Sure, I can read that. Okay pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading Community Planning Commission is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so. I'll just say by visiting our website or by calling 301-715-8592, meeting code 9854300. Sorry, 00926.
Okay. So we have first public hearing doesn't start late o'clock, so. Do we want to look over the A and R 2729 Boroughs Road?
Sure.
I have a question. Were there supposed to be two sheets to that map?
Yes.
Oh, I only got, there's only one, there's only one sheet. Only one sheet, that's why it was so confusing, I could find lot three.
The one, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, why is there only one? All right, let me see, so which, I just want to make sure I can show you.
We got the first one, we didn't get the second sheet.
Oh, there's sheet two. Okay, let me show you sheet two, I'm gonna try to upload it now, I don't know what happened. Let me see.
Should have asked you that before we started anything else.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, it was just the first sheet, okay, that's okay, no problem. Do you want me to just show it on my screen, or do you want me to put it into the share file?
Well, at this point, probably once you just screen share it, but I don't know, I mean, I read through all of the verbiage on it. And it looks like a pretty straightforward thing.
Yeah.
Unless anybody else has got some comments on it, so I think we could probably. If we take a look at it to see, well, basically, we're just looking at what's, you know, been designed, so it's an even swap.
Okay.
It's not like it's a.
Right, it's just an even swap with no effect, it's not affecting the frontage at all, so. Okay, let me share my screen, oh, there are some people who would like to come in, let me just admit them, okay, admit all, um. Okay, let me see. Share screen. Alright, um. Okay, is this the sheet that you've already seen?
No.
No.
Okay, so this just shows, so there's just shown under two different sheets, this is the parcel A going from. Sorry, this one is going.
Well, we have Luke here, do you want to have him?
Oh, yeah, of course, Luke would like to explain it, sorry, Luke.
Sure, yeah, Luke Roy, LJR Engineering, that one that you have up. That you're sharing is the parcel A that's defined, that's going from 29 to 27. You can see where it says proposed lot line to the left side of that parcel A. And the reason that it was. Had to be done in two plans was because 27 boroughs is registered land. And 29 is regular recorded land, so the land court didn't want. The regular land part of this on their plan, so we had this split it up.
They fussy, aren't they?
Little bit.
Registered land is kind of important, it has a whole, it has its own. It's a much more secure way of holding it, so I mean, you don't want to make apples and oranges there, so.
Right, no, I understand that, it's just, it's just funny.
Okay, any other comments on this, Luke? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think so, and I'm certainly here if there's any questions, but to me, it was where it's an equal area swap. Agreed to by the two owners, mainly to. Clean up a encroachment issue at the back, 29 onto 27. And equal area, it's not impacting the frontages, so pretty straightforward.
Okay, anybody have any questions from the board here? Okay, a hearing done, do we have a motion for this?
I have the motions that I'm gonna read, because.
It's two separate motions?
Well, no, just Debbie sent me the motions and asked if I could upload it into share file, but I didn't do it in time, so. Um, okay, I move, I move that the CPC vote to approve the plan entitled Plan of Land, North Reading. I'm sorry, I moved that the CPC endorse, vote to endorse as approval not required. The plan of, a plan entitled Plan of Land, North Reading, Massachusetts, stated March 1st, 2021, drawn by LJR Engineering, Inc.
Is so move? Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, like a record two five.
Do we need to have a roll call on that, Danielle? Is that what they're requiring?
You know what, actually, you do need to do a roll call vote, I'm sorry, you do.
Okay, Mr. Hayden.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Jeremiah Johnson. And Mr. Redloff. You're muted, Dave.
Now he's muted.
You're muted, unmute yourself. Still don't hear you.
Is that any better? There you go. About that, Mr. Chairman, aye?
Okay, and I say aye as well, so that still stays five in favor, no opposed. Thank you, Luke, very much for coming and doing the explanation for us.
Yep, thank you. Good night.
Alright, I'm sorry, Debbie is having a little trouble getting into the meeting, so I'm just going to quickly email her.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, all set.
Okay. Okay, we can't do that yet, so. 303 Main Street, are we all set with that? We gonna want to vote in a plan endorsement on that?
Yes, we can vote to endorse that plan, and I can read the motion if I like. I move that the CPC vote to endorse the plans entitled Site Plan Building and Park, Building Parking and Access Revisions 303 Main Street, North Reading. Dated February 2nd, 2021, drawn by Williams and Sprages as amended, well, it's not amended, so, drawn by Williams and Sprages.
Is so move?
Okay, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Redloff, is there any further discussion, any questions on it? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The record two five in favor, no opposed? We may as well move right along to 239 North Street.
That one is ready.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Pierce.
Was happy with the final plan there, because I know they kept asking questions.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
I looked, so I looked at these plans tonight, and last time we had a discussion with the applicant. We were talking about a sidewalk, he did a sidewalk from Town Hall to the property, but we had also talked about a sidewalk to the southwest. Even though it was going to end at the state property, get that sidewalk across their frontage. And there isn't one, they wanted to complain because they said that there was a drop off in wetlands and. They're far enough away from the wetlands, they're much farther than their building is gonna be. They're outside the 12-foot no disturb zone, there is a drop off, but presently. From what I can tell, the roadway doesn't run to the edge of their property. And from what I'm looking at on their drawings, where North Street is, it's like, they could have asked permission to use our right of way. To build a sidewalk in there. Because, you know, once it's, once they construct that property, it's gonna be hard to get a sidewalk across their property at that point. I just know, you know, they wanted to complain about it, we talked, you know, the engineers said, well, there's wetlands there, and then I went and looked. On the wetlands maps, and I looked on their maps, and I, during the meeting while they were there, I said that there wasn't. Any discernible wetlands, and that they should try, and never heard anything back about this, so I'm very concerned why. You know, it's only another, I don't know, couple hundred feet of sidewalk, not even that. For, for what they take from North Reading daily and weekly, it's a small little bit to give back.
All right, do we have anybody representing the 239 North Street tonight with us?
No, I mean, I could invite. I could invite someone to come back and to speak with us, I'm sorry, when I looked at the plan detail, I thought it captured what we had said from their site driveway.
It captured what Dan had mentioned, and then I said, let's go the whole length, and the engineer said, well, there's wetlands there. There are no wetlands. In the immediate vicinity, they're seven or eight feet below it to the height, to the 100-year flood zone.
Yeah, but I think that that's on their land, I think they were thinking about that, I think if they built in our layout, then they wouldn't be in the wetlands, I think that was the concern.
In our layout, they would be in the wetlands?
They would not be in the wetlands.
They would not be in the wetlands.
Exactly, but if they go in their own land, they may be in the wetlands.
No, there's, if you look at, look at their drawings, Warren, that the wetlands doesn't, do not come up the eight feet from the 100-year flood zone. They're in 100, maybe in the 100-foot buffer, but their building is within the 100-foot buffer. Almost that entire site they're building on is within 100-foot buffer. You know, there, I think the elevation, and I could, I could look, but. The elevation is 79, I think it's the 100-foot, and I think they'd have to be at about 80, maybe 85. But.
Yeah, they show 85, 86 contour line right up to the side where the sidewalk would be.
Right, right, so.
It's 86.
That's another seven feet.
Actually, even 87.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a long way to come for, for that, it just. I just don't.
I don't recall what their response was when we asked them for that, I know they said the wetland thing, but they didn't say, they didn't say they wouldn't do it, didn't they, did they, what did they say?
They didn't agree to do it.
They didn't.
Yeah, but what I recall is they said inappropriately, we can't pave on the state's property, but. I think the way Chris had left it was, well, we'd like you to at least to do your property up to that line. I do recall that.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know that you asked, but I don't think that they agreed, they only agreed to do it from their driveway, I thought.
Yeah, it was kind of like, they didn't, after I said that, they didn't give an answer, and there was never any more discussion about it, it just kind of went into the vapor, the ether. You know, this is our one shot to get anything done on this property right. You know, it, wetlands aside, there, there really no wetlands that they're gonna affect out there. Other than they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to change where their, their Marafi fence goes.
Well, we're gonna have to decide, well, if we want to pursue this, then we're gonna have to put this vote off and see what, see about getting them back in.
Could you do this conditional, the approval with condition of the.
Yeah, you know, this is a, this needs, this is a site plan, right?
Yeah, but the conditional approval describes where the sidewalk goes, and we didn't vote to make them do that, I just, I don't think that we're gonna be able to do that at this point. I, I'm sorry, I thought that that's what.
I thought we had that in the conditional approval, okay.
I mean, I can pull it up and see how it's worded, I just, I don't, I just, I don't think they agreed to that.
Well, I remember you asking for it, Chris, and then pushing back on it, but then I thought, they said, well, we don't, you know, we could put a sidewalk in, I thought they agreed to do it.
I did too, I thought they just pushed back on the state thing, or they were just making it clear that, hey, they could only go so far, because.
Yeah, the state property, and I.
And I agreed with them on that, you know, I, you know, they can't go pave over that, but.
Right.
I did, I did recall they would go up to their line.
Yeah, it's dirt there now, people can walk across the state property. You know, it's just.
But I, I thought that they really thought that was, that was no big deal.
That's what I thought too, and it's just not included, so.
I kind of expected it to be, you know, in there, but I didn't really look for it.
I thought that they were saying no, but I mean, I can, I can speak to them, I know, I can, I can call them tomorrow and ask them if, you know, they would. Consider going for it, no, what was, what was the endpoint that we were hoping to?
The southwest corner of their property, right to the state land. You know, the, and. It may be in the, they may be in North Reading's layout, but it's not hard to get permission from North Reading to put a sidewalk in there, because we're not gonna have a street. On Massachusetts property.
We traditionally, over the years, have had many contractors do offsite improvements, this is.
Absolutely.
No, of course not, but we just want to be clear that, with them, that that's what we were asking for, um.
Yeah.
The plan.
The plan you're referencing in the, in the draft conditional approval does not, and, and do we, we already vote to approve this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is just the endorsement, I mean, I can.
Yeah, we already, I think we already voted to approve this, Chris, so.
Yeah.
So, we may be.
Problem is, when we don't have plans, and we do wanna.
Yes, you know.
It's, you can't match them up.
Right thing, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we're gonna not do that anymore. If they can't get their plans done, then they're gonna have to wait for their approvals, period. You know, because you can't, I can't look at, read one thing and then look at the other thing.
Let's do this, I mean, I think we kind of got it, we're kind of gonna trap you, but I don't want to give this up either. So perhaps what we can do is, Danielle, maybe you could give them a call tomorrow and see if they'd be willing to do that extra sidewalk. And tell them, we'd let them work in the layout, and we'll, we'll take care of all the arrangements, as long as they'll do the building of it.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's the only fair thing we can do since we already approved it.
Yeah, well, and I, I think I offered that we'd help them out.
So from the southwest corner of their property? I thought they had, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you, I was just giving you the other end, which would be the state property.
Yeah.
From that new driveway they got coming into the state property, southwest, yeah. So they would have a sidewalk that goes continuously across their property, and then that ends at the state property. But we know that some point.
Look at it from the other way, anybody, anybody that wants to walk, once they cross the state property, will be on a safe sidewalk all the way to 21.
That's right, and that's exactly what you said, Warren.
Yes.
That, that state property right now, you could walk across that, almost the entire.
Agreed, I thought they agreed to do it, I think that's what Dave said, I, I think they said, yeah, well, when we said, yeah, you could just, you know, put it in there, and they said, well, okay. They didn't think it was a big deal.
And that's, that's what it was, you know?
Yeah.
For not being able, go ahead.
No, I can, I can contact them tomorrow and say, I'll just let them know that when you looked at the plans for endorsement, that wasn't your understanding of. The sidewalk extent, and you'd like to see it from, you know, from, from. Southwest corner of their property.
To the state property.
Yeah.
The driveway to the state property, and, you know, when we were talking about it, Warren, I, I said that we would help them. Get permission to work on in the North Reading layout. Because it's done all the time, we just asked DPW, and the DPW doesn't have a problem with it. Plus, there's no road in it, you know, and there's no road there, because you can't have a road jogging around the state property, it doesn't drive through the state property, we know that.
Well, do we want to put this off? I mean, I don't know that we could legitimately do that, but.
I'd like to put it off, I mean, you know, yeah, you're right, maybe I can't do it, but. We can't for a week or two.
I mean, I don't think the endorsement of the plans, it's not like a subdivision where it really has to be endorsed, that's really kind of our choice. I don't have to withhold anything, like, you know, sign off on a building permit over it. It's, um. You know, if you would like to.
Okay, let's do this, and let's pass on endorsing that plan, aye? Let's pass on it, and then we'll just say, well, you know, this doesn't look the way we thought it was gonna look, and then you can see what you can do with them, and see if they'll put it back on, if they were, will. Then at the next meeting, we'll endorse it, how's that?
Okay.
I agree with that, thank you, yes.
Ryan, you good? Jeremiah? Okay.
I'm sorry, can I ask, okay, just one clarifying question, because I'm actually looking at the plan right now, and I just want to be sure I understand, I see where the sidewalk runs from the, from the site driveway. Up to match up with the town hall property. So the, it would be on, from the other side also of that driveway extending down until they hit, okay, I see it, I see it.
The state corner.
Yeah, okay, just that other half, okay, I got it, I understand.
That's all.
Got it.
Okay. So we'll put that off and do our next meeting, okay?
Okay.
And again, since, thank you for the clarification on that, Danielle, that helps make the decision.
Okay.
Knowing, knowing that we're not really under a gun on that, so.
No, and I.
It's a way of expressing our displeasure with what we got served with, so.
Okay, and I, you know, I won't, I won't withhold, you know, any signatures on, you know, routing slips for beginning of work, I just think that we should. Right, I mean, unless you want me to.
No.
Okay, okay.
No, that's not, I mean, they can work in the back of the site, they're not gonna affect the front.
Yeah, and they're gonna, they're not gonna do finished paving until everything else is done.
Right.
So that means we could, uh. Hopefully, they'll acquiesce to it, and we'll be fine, so.
Okay, okay, I'll say something.
Okay? Okay. You still got about five minutes, do you, do we want, do we want to talk about 92 Condon Street? I don't really have a lot to discuss, they were just, because it's really, basically, I don't know if you want to give an overview of it, Danielle, but has everybody read their, read the?
Yeah, we talked about this last year too, I think.
Yeah, well, the building inspector, you know, if everybody's read their, their, their share file, and we should, go ahead, Danielle, just give a quick overview, so.
Sure, so, um, the building inspector has been concerned about some, you know, zoning and building code violations on that property, and. You know, this is something that we have spoken about before, there are also, you know, instances of not complying with their site plan. So the building inspector has been working with town council on this, and asked me if I, you know, would just document what all the instances of, you know, non-compliance with the. Site plan were, and he's going to be enforcing everything together. So, you know, looking at the site, there were really quite a few things that were not done, or maybe they had been done at one point, but are now changed. You know, storage on the site that had not been approved as part of their site plan. Relocation of dumpster, not marking pavement areas, removal of parking spaces, all kinds of things, so. I just wanted you to be aware of it, and Jerry wanted you to be aware of it too, that, that I was working with him on that, and that he was, you know. Seeking to enforce a number of things, including those.
Yeah, so basically, what this is, is this is the discussion just to inform us of what's going on, and of course, the building inspector is our enforcement. So, so just so we know what's going on with that site, and that the building inspector is following up on it to make sure that these things get done. Not sure why we, how we. I'm not really sure how they got a occupancy permit without everything being signed up.
I don't know, but they had had it for many years.
It's not that many years.
Well.
What do you think, Chris, it slipped through the cracks, through a time when.
It wasn't, it wasn't us, Warren, we, we approved, we approved it in 2000, was it six?
Six, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then it left us, it was the building inspector. I think.
I mean, now, we would get a sign off.
We have to take a look, we have to do a sign off.
For the occupancy, yeah, but that was back in, you know, 2006, and I don't know if it happens.
When we didn't have a planning administrator, and I was filling in the position there, I, that's what I had to do, I had to go out and do final inspections and sign offs to make sure everything was right, so.
Right. And it was probably in binder at the time, and everything was, was right at the time for there.
No, no, it couldn't have just been in binder, because it wouldn't have, that wouldn't have met the requirements. Somehow, it was a ball that dropped there, I would say.
Yeah.
I have the whole sidewalk missing, unless they put it in and took it back out.
No, it just wasn't finished, I mean, inside, there were some pretty substantial things having to do with safety, building code violations that were just never done, that should have been done, so, I mean, the whole site is kind of an issue.
Well, he's on it now, so I imagine that he'll follow through on it. Anybody have any questions on that, or what's going on there? Okay. I don't think we want to get into the 5G unless you got, we have, what do we have on 5G, anything new, or?
Yeah, I have, so, I, I do, but it's, it is a longer discussion, and I can, I mean, if you want to wait until after the public hearings, I can definitely update you, I. What I wanted to discuss with you was a recommendation to be made to the select board for a policy.
Oh, yeah, just.
A zoning amendment, and I just kind of wanted to go through it.
Okay.
Those things.
We'll do that a little later on, then, because I guess we're pretty much there for our 8pm.
Yeah.
So we can look at the 148, 150 Park Street rezone. It's a public hearing. A continued public hearing for 8pm.
Um, so it's, I think we're just opening it, so would we, um. Zoning hearing for.
The actual, okay, for the zoning, okay, the reason, okay.
Right. Um.
Okay, do we, do we want to read a public hearing notice?
Do you want me to read the legal notice?
Yeah.
I can do that.
We've had a number of discussions on this, so I feel like we're, you know.
Right? We've had many workshop discussions on this.
Yes, feels like we've already been doing this for years.
Okay, let me just. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Community Planning Commission of the Town of North Reading, Mass, will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, April 6th, 2021. Commencing at 8pm by a Zoom virtual meeting, the access information is given. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties the opportunity to comment on a proposed amendment to the North Reading zoning bylaw. Which has been submitted to the 2021 annual town meeting as follows. Add Article 27, Senior Housing Overlay District, to the North Reading zoning bylaw to allow for the creation of age-restricted housing by special permit. With the requirement that 15% of the age-restricted housing units be affordable units, and to allow for a local preference as to the sale of affordable units. To the extent approved by the state, and to amend the zoning map to place properties known as 146, 148, and 150 Park Street, North Reading Assessors Map. 54, lots 123, 124, and 125, in that senior housing overlay district. The amendment also proposes the following related housekeeping changes to the zoning bylaw, adding this new special permit to the list of special permits. For which the Community Planning Commission is the special permit granting authority, and updating the revision date of the zoning map. A complete copy of the text of the proposed amendment to the North Reading zoning bylaw is on file with the town clerk, and is available for public inspection on the Town of North Reading website. On the Community Planning Commission's webpage under zoning amendments. And in the Community Planning Commission office, Monday through Thursday, 8am to 4pm, Friday, 8am to 1pm, and by appointment only, the phone number is given for the planning office. To call for an appointment, advertised March 18th and 25th, 2021, in the North Reading transcript.
Okay. So I see we have Bruce, Bruce, who's doing, will do your presentation tonight?
Chris is gonna get us started, Warren, thank you.
Okay.
Um, if you want, Chris, Chris and I had spoken a little bit before, I can start just by giving a quick summary, and then, if you'd like. So, this is a, the proposal would be. So, this is a, um, the, the proposal, um, would be to allow for, uh, multifamily residential, um, the local business district, which does not, um, normally allow that. This would be an overlay that would be over these three properties that would allow for that. Um, this, uh, the zoning was designed specifically to accommodate a particular project, um, that Mr. Wheeler has in mind for his properties. And the yield of that would be, um, it would be a maximum of fifty units. Um, and there is an affordability provision with, um, uh, there would be eight affordable units and the affordable units would be in perpetuity and they would be on the site. Um, the project is proposed as, uh, fifty-five and older, uh, so at least one occupant of each of the units would need to be fifty-five and older. Um, it's a zoning district covering four acres over three parcels. Um, and this would be just for residences and not for nursing home or hospital. Um, it does have a mixed-use component in the zoning if allowed by the CPC, um, because Mr. Wheeler's office would be remaining, um, on the site. And, um, we have had several, um, informal workshops, um, and the, I know that the applicant has presented their plans, um, before, uh, several other town boards. Um, they do need to, uh, have permission from the Historic District Commission. Um, and this is a project that, um, you know, after they developed, you know, the CPC had decided, uh, that they would like to, uh, sponsor a town meeting. Um, it does relate closely to recommendations made both in, uh, the town's, uh, housing production plan and in the, in the community master plan, um, specifically the need for, um, affordable senior housing. So I didn't know if, um, Latham wanted to any more to that or if there were questions about it that, that he or his, uh, you know, team could answer.
If you don't mind, um, I'll just quickly go over it, although Danielle did a great job, uh, summarizing. So the proposed senior housing overlay district is consistent with the master plan and the town's housing production plan and serves a public purpose. It provides senior housing, uh, which is a noted objective of the town. It provides a net increase in affordable housing, also a town objective, provides a greater diversity of housing, which is also a town objective, revitalizes the town center, likewise a town objective, and it's compatible with the area. The overlay district is a genuine public benefit, uh, to several specifically identified public needs. And we have presented this, obviously, we've been working with CPC on this for quite a while. We've appeared, uh, before the Historic District Commission at least twice. We've appeared twice before the Finance, uh, Committee. And, um, the senior housing overlay district is a tool to address some of the serious demographic issues that are facing North Reading, um, as well as give North Reading seniors more housing options via a special permit procedure through CPC as part of a site plan review process. It's a proposal, is an overlay district like many other overlay districts in town. Um, it's, it's designed, as, as Danielle said, with three, uh, articles. The overlay district before you was drafted using applicable definitions under state, federal law, Commonwealth smart growth models and good land use criteria. This can provide independent housing units for seniors over the age of fifty-five, allow aging North Reading seniors options to downsize and remain in town, simultaneously vitalize the downtown and preserve the character of the town. To achieve these objectives, the overlay is designed, uh, as a senior housing project. It must consist of four or more acres of land within walking distance, two hundred and fifty feet, public park, public common, or public library, at least have two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, um, and specifically is one forty-six, one forty-eight, and one fifty Park Street, which consists of three separate lots. Um, it allows for multiple buildings, including mixed use and a senior housing project, uh, so long as all principal buildings have a minimum site distance of twenty feet between buildings. The buildings do not cover more than forty percent of the gross site area. New buildings for senior housing have setbacks of twenty-five feet from the front lot line, twenty feet from the side lot line, twenty feet from the rear lot line, maximum height of forty-five feet. And the project have minimum open space of at least twenty percent of the total site area. Uh, and new buildings must be in harmony in design with the neighborhood, including use of pink roofs and end gables. A senior housing project must also have onsite senior common area amenity for the use of senior residents, elevators for all new, uh, multi-floor residential structures, which must also have handicap access from parking garages to dwelling units. Density would be, uh, limited so that a dwelling unit cannot, cannot have more than two bedrooms and the total number of dwelling units in a senior house project does not exceed fifty dwelling units. In addition, the applicant for senior housing development must contribute to the stock of the town's affordable home, um, homeownership units equal to fifteen percent of the market rate residential units. Importantly, the affordable units must be located in the project. They cannot be located offsite and they are to be consistent with Commonwealth's, uh, Inclusionary Zoning, uh, Model Bylaw, subject to the affordable housing restrictions in the bylaws and the D H C D regulations. And these affordable units would be in perpetuity. Um, so with that being said, uh, we request that, uh, the CPC, um, who is decided, had voted to sponsor this project, we request that they also, um, issue a favorable report to the town meeting. And if you folks have any questions at all, we're, we're here and ready and willing to address your questions tonight.
Do you have questions?
Okay, um. So, um, we're gonna, are we gonna do a presenting for everybody to picture with the pictures and all that?
You want me to, uh, screen share so that people can see where it is, we're actually.
Probably since this is the beginning of a public hearing, we really need to, I mean, we've, we're kind of, we've seen a lot of it, but other people that are here tonight may not have, so we really need to do the whole thing.
Okay.
The same as we would if we were at a meeting, so.
Um. Chris, did you want to share the?
Sure, I, I can share some screens if you don't mind.
Are you able to?
Yep, I can give it a shot. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, can you folks see my screen?
Yeah.
All right, so this is, uh, this is the body of the zoning bylaw. And it's, uh, as Danielle says, it's basically on the town's website in full if somebody wants to read it. It's also been published, uh, public notice in the newspaper. Um, in terms of the zoning plan itself, hopefully everybody can see that. Can you, can you folks see the zoning?
Yes.
Okay, so that's basically the, uh, dimensions, uh, and the location. Um, and I can give some additional, uh, plans as well if you'd like.
Okay. Linda Boniface, one thirty-six Park Street.
Well, uh, hold on, let him finish doing his presentation and we'll do public input in a little bit.
Perfect.
Can you folks see this plan that basically shows the, um, basically three lots that this property consists of?
Yep.
Okay, so, so basically that's, that's the location of the zoning district in question. And, as I said, it's consistent with the town's master plan and it's consistent with the housing production plan that the town has, uh, produced. And in terms of the project itself, uh, this is the location, uh, from an aerial view. All right, so everybody can see that the library is here.
Oh, not yet.
Look over to. Look over to the map.
Okay. Share this.
You may have to change programs in your screen share.
Yeah.
Minimize.
Yep.
Me.
If I stop sharing, maybe I can then go.
Okay.
The portion.
Okay.
Okay. All right, you folks see the aerial view?
There you go.
Okay, thanks. So, obviously over here, we have the Public Safety Fire Department and Police Department. We have the library over here, we have the town common over here, and, and this is the, the property here. Okay, so the plans that I showed basically show this, this property right here. Okay, um, so that, that's in terms of the overlay district, in terms of, uh, some plans. And this, and this is the current, an example of what the current use is. And historically, um, this is what was there before. And so it covered a good portion of the factory back in the day. Um, this is what is being proposed. Basically, the, um, the structure, uh, historic, first structure on the front would be moved. Can you? Can you see the?
You just still see the aerial.
Oh, all right, this is gonna have to be point by point then.
Okay.
All right, so. All right, so you folks, can you see the, uh, the rendering here?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can see the rendering.
Okay, great. So, um, there's the historic McLean House. Uh, the proposal is to, uh, move the historic McLean House so that basically it can put, be put on a permanent foundation. Right now, it has a rubble rock foundation and that is, uh, potentially not viable, uh, for the long term. Uh, also, it's gonna be moved in such a way that would increase site distance going up sixty-two. Um, this would be the proposed, uh, housing for fifty-five and over. Um, and hopefully, let me see if this works, okay? Okay, can you folks see this other rendering as well?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is obviously the, the library over here in the island. There's the historic, uh, McLean House here. And then, starting here, this would be the end that would be facing the street and the, the other fifty-five housing would be coming back this way. So. Just, just to work clear, this is basically a zoning bylaw, uh, overlay district. And this is the currently discussed proposed project. But, just realize they're both a little bit, we're getting ahead of ourselves by basically going in the architectural renderings. Because it still has to go through site plan review, it still has to be approved by, uh, Historic District Commission, so.
Okay. So tonight, actually, what we're working on is the rezoning. And, um, so what Chris has given us here is, is a, and Danielle has given us is an overview of what the intent of this, the reason for the rezone. But tonight, that's basically, uh, we're talking about doing the rezoning. Any questions from the board? You can, you can stop your screen share, Chris, so we can, uh, see. Okay, any questions or comments from the board at this time? I know we've seen a lot of this already, so we're pretty, we're kind of up to speed on it. Okay, so what I'm gonna do then, since this is a public hearing, I'm gonna open it to the public. And, um, please state your name and address and, and direct all questions to me here. So, does anybody have a comment or a question on this project?
Linda Boniface, one thirty-six Park Street. Um, it, it seems very, very, very good right now.
Thank you. The, uh, we have a lot of experience with Bruce working in town. He's done some really nice work for us. And so we expect the same from this project, so.
How long do you think the project is going to take as we are at Butters and we do a lot of yard, like being outside in the yard, et cetera?
Sure, I don't know if, uh, if, then you can, if any other people can actually answer that. Do you have an idea, Bruce?
Yeah, well, the, the construction, uh, uh, timeframe would be twelve months to construct the building. But, uh, from a construction standpoint, I think the permitting process, uh, uh, assuming we, we, the, um, uh, going over there, the permitting process would be, um, six to eight months after that. Um, and then we'd be probably be looking at, if, if everything, um, went smoothly, we'd be looking at beginning construction in the, uh, late spring, uh, or early summer of two thousand and twenty-three, and it would be a year, uh, uh, construction, um, final.
Okay, did you hear all that?
I did, and, and I'm just, as, as in a butter there in my backyard, I'm just, you know, concerned about the construction and the time element, what time it starts finishing and how would it impact me as, as a neighbor, a butter?
We, we would comply to all of the, um, uh, the time constraints, work time constraints within the town for beginning and ending work and, uh, and closing work. Um, and, uh, it, it, it's, yeah, it, it, it's a very focused schedule. Uh, the twelve-month schedule is, um, uh, uh, is, is a lot of detail, uh, in that. And, uh, um, uh, working within the, the town's time guidelines, uh, that's how long. Uh, we're shortly gonna be preparing a, uh, screening and buffer planting uh, for the eastern side of the building, uh, which, uh, which I'll be sharing, uh, with, uh, uh, the, the neighbors and the Butters to that side and be looking for, uh, for feedback, um, uh, with regard to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your questions. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Hi, yes, I'm Common Petrosino, I'm a butter directly, uh, to the left as you look from the, uh, street. And, uh, as far as rezoning goes, or, or the special permit for zoning, um, I think this is a no-brainer what Bruce is, uh, um, what he's put forth, I think would be great for the center of the town, much better than what's there now. And, um, I have no issues with it. He was, uh, kind enough to reach out to see what my concerns were. Uh, we spoke and, um, I feel confident that, uh, moving forward, he will, uh, address those concerns and, um, do his best to, uh, to do what's right for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kamai. Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, yes, Vincenzo.
I, and, and again, I'm asking this question as capacitors liaison to the select board. Um, at some point, maybe between now and the town meeting, um, I know Bruce, you said that there were some environmental, uh, I think phase one, phase two studies done. I believe you, if I'm correct. If that, um, if maybe at some point after the article presentation, uh, maybe you could present that to the select board because we do have a number of people asking about the environmental impact. So, you know, whatever the form is, but they're gonna, they, there's quite a few people who are gonna have questions on it.
Vincenzo, uh, to get the ball rolling with that, I can send you the reports tomorrow and I will request time on the next selectance meeting so that you guys can have the reports ahead of time. I don't want to just come and present it.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll send it to you and I will include in the email, I'll C C the consultant that is, his email address that, um, that did the environmental study so that we can have, uh, a, a complete dialogue, um, uh, with regard to, um, uh, with, with regard to the findings. Um, so, i- i- as a mini summary, as a mini summary, I'll say that, uh, uh, the site is, is very clean and we, we went into it expecting, um, very, very clean relative to, um, the, the, the history of the wagon factory and the Turner truck and, uh, uh, in, in, in just being this, this more, this historic industrial, uh, location. Um, uh, but we did a phase two and a phase, we did a phase one and a phase two study. Um, and those were all conditions upon our financing and our closing. Uh, so it wasn't just a simple phase one, it was actually a very elaborate phase two study. Uh, but I will, I will send you, um, all of that tomorrow so that you have it for the board. And I'll communicate with the town administrator's office about getting time at the at the next selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, and and again, it just, because, yeah, I I agree, you you said that some things were already all said, it just that, you know, just so other other people can see it in the community who have, you know, especially with the Ipswich River, it's kind of a sensitivity point. So that's why I think it's nice to hear it from you, so.
Agreed. We want to get, we want, we want the information out and 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 shared with people, and then we want to have a dialogue to answer, address questions and concerns so that everyone has a thorough and complete understanding of what was done and what was found.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Chair Pierce.
Thank you. Okay, okay, any any further discussion on it? Okay, before I close the public here, public portion of this meeting, Danielle, do we I would assume we have a motion for tonight on this? You're muted, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes, I can I can read that if you would like. And this is if you decide that you this would be a motion to recommend the article to town meeting. Or not.
Okay, well, before you do that, I need to close the public hearing. So I just want to make sure there's no more questions from the public on this. And if it appears that there isn't, then I will close the public portion of this hearing, and we can move on to a motion. When you're ready, Danielle.
I move at the CPC vote to support the change in the map amendment at the June twenty twenty one town meeting.
I still move.
Second.
That that's your whole motion? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, there's really no, I mean, there's another part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing else to do unless you wanted to submit a report. There's no other.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Send you further discussion. Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Roll, roll, roll call, Warren.
On a roll call, okay, Mr. Hayden.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Redlock.
Aye.
I say aye, so that's five in favor and opposed.
I do have a question for Mr. Wheeler. If he could also send that report to Danielle so we could see it.
You bet.
Thank you, sir.
Then.
Good.
Chair Pierce, and then I just wanted to confirm that someone from the CPC will be there to just give a little summary of the article you're sponsoring to the select board, if possible. Thank you. I I think it was customary, but I'm new to it, so I just, I'd rather ask.
Yeah, no, if we sponsor an article, we have to go there and present to the board, so. Okay. Go back to.
Four twelve fourteen.
Yeah, well, I'm just following on my iPad, all of every all these. Okay, so our public hearing is going to be four twelve fourteen, Park Street, rezone.
So I think Jo Man let me know that she might be running a few minutes late because she has another meeting just finishing up. So if you'd like, what we can do is the other zoning amendment, which is also scheduled for an eight fifteen public hearing, which is just a simple map revision date.
Okay, all right.
Oh, here she is. Actually, I'm just letting Jo in right now.
Perfect timing.
Hey, Jill, you can unmute yourself so we can hear you.
But I.
There you go.
Did I, I was really perfect timing? I'm thrilled.
The four twelve and fourteen clock street rezone.
Good evening, Jill. Would you like me to share my screen so that I can show you the plans and have them up at the same time, Danielle, or do you have them?
No, that would be.
If you can, if you would like to screen share, you can do that. I can also, I think as we opened this up, I was gonna read the public hearing notice.
You have that?
Yes, okay.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty eight, section five, and section two hundred dash thirty of the Town of North Reading zoning bylaw, the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on April sixth, twenty twenty one, at eight fifteen P M. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on a proposed amendment to the North Reading zoning bylaw and zoning map. The proposed amendment is as follows: amend the North Reading zoning map by changing the zoning designation of three parcels of land located on the Concord Street from the Residence A R A zoning district to Industrial Office zoning district. The parcels are specifically identified as follows: fourteen Concord Street, map eighteen parcel fifteen, fourteen point one acres, twelve Concord Street, map eighteen parcel fourteen, point nine two acres, and four Concord Street, map eighteen parcel thirteen, point nine two acres. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, M G L, Chapter thirty eight, Section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. The meeting of the Community Planning Commission will be conducted via remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting. To participate by video, visit, and I will give the Zoom information, which is on the website, as well as the phone number. A complete text of the citizen's petition that includes a description of the foregoing amendment and a map showing the location of the above referenced parcels of land in the surrounding zoning districts is available online on the community planning pages under zoning amendments and is also on file in the C P O, sorry, the Town Clerk and Community Planning Office, Town Hall, two thirty five North Street, North Reading, and are available for inspection by appointment only during the hours of eight A M. to four P M. Monday through Thursday, and eight A M. to one P M. Friday. For an appointment, please call the planning office. The phone number is given.
Thank you. So I'm going to share my screen then, so that we can have. So basically, I'm going to first show the board just the general plan of land that we had. Just showing each of the lots that are subject to this amendment. Basically, as Ms. McKnight said, this property is owned by Sergio Covielo via an LLC entity called twelve to fourteen Concord Street and also owned by Paul Magliozzi. So Lot one is owned by Paul Magliozzi. However, Sergio does have the right and an option to acquire that property. Sergio does own Lot two and Lot three. So everybody's familiar with the property. This is where the seven acres farm used to be. Here are some of the barn buildings, you know, the chicken coops. And these are the two homes that exist on Concord. Lot three currently is a vacant parcel of land. I'm also going to just show you the zoning map, because I think this is view, let's rotate it so it looks a little bit better than this, right? Okay, so here we go. So this is the property that is the subject of the rezoning. Pursuant to this particular map, you can see that the Residence A is located across the street and to one side of the property. The industrial office is located to the other side. So what we're really trying to do is expand the industrial office a bit over to this area. This is where Bab Bobcat of Boston is and where they have their, you know, outdoor areas. And then this particular area here is is a horse farm. So the proposal, as noted in the petition that had been submitted by, I believe, Mr. Covielo, had secured a hundred signatures of town residents to rezone these particular parcels from the R A zone to the industrial office zone. And that's really it. So we believe that by doing so, instead of having more land developed as residential subdivisions within the Town of North Reading, it will give them the opportunity to actually develop the parcel for an industrial purpose and an office purpose. Mr. Covielo has a business in town. It does have one, a building that he does use presently. And he plans on kind of having the same types of uses out in this particular area, which are permitted in the industrial office zone. I don't know if the board has any questions. Last time we had come before the board because we wanted to do an informal hearing before we actually submitted the petition. And we did give notice to the butters, the director butters, and had talked to some of them. So we're here this evening to simply conduct the public hearing portion of the rezoning that's required prior to being heard at town meeting. And if you have any questions at all, Mr. Covielo is on the call, and I would be able to answer anything that you could ask, I guess. Thank you very much.
Okay, if you can remove your screen share so we can see, we'll put it back up if we need it.
You want me to take it down?
Yes, please.
All done.
So that, because like, that way I can see if people have questions, okay?
Can you see, now can you see yourselves?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I wanted to make sure. I'm sorry.
So I I understood that you said that you've talked to some of the neighbors and some of the people surrounding, or you or Sergio have?
Yes.
Okay, then, okay. I'm gonna start by asking if there are any questions from the board on this proposal.
Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Hayden.
I'm not so much of a question. When we build zones within any town or city, we try to put buffers between business industrial areas and residence areas. And originally, that was a farm, and there's another one next to it. And I know the person next to this property is really in favor of this going to industrial office space. And it it does join another, you know, it does tie right into it, so it's not a orphan little zone, a spot zone. But as we, as we extend these properties, now we're gonna be hard against, you know, real it, the the farm was in Residence A, but it was rezone Residence A when it was a farm. So it was grandfathered, and a farm would be grandfathered in there anyways, I believe. But once we rezone this, then there's gonna be a chance to rezone the next, then we're gonna be, you know, getting right on top of real residence homes and and it moves it right down and increases the traffic flow in this area. And once you go around that corner at the stop sign from Concord to Park Street there, it gets, gonna get a little bit more difficult. It's already difficult now to negotiate that during heavy traffic times in the morning and the evening. But so I I'm just concerned about extending that industrial office area one more, one more set of lots towards residence. And, you know, it just, it it doesn't, I don't, I'm I'm just concerned about that.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on the, from the board? Yeah, a quick comment that I'm gonna make is, you know, you you are right, Chris, except that one of the things that would happen on the site plan, which is what this would have to have, if the rezoning goes through, and then you'd still have to do a site plan, and during the process of doing the site plan, that's when the screening and the buffering of the associated properties would happen. And you've seen enough of these to know that that's probably, we would probably, would require some kind of, some kind of buffering.
Right, but a whole lot is better than just a little bit. You know, it just, it's it's a, it's a different environment when you're in industrial office space and, you know, dumpsters early in the morning and lots of traffic in and out and this and that.
Yeah.
And, you know, it it's, it's just, it's just not, you know, farmers in there, I'm sure they made noise too. I'm sure the turkeys made noise too, but it's, you know, it's, it's not the same.
It's the roosters.
It's the roosters, that's right. And they don't, they don't, they don't crow at night. They crow during the day, so.
Yeah, early in the day.
Anytime, not just at sunrise, and I know that.
Okay, so, so, all right, so, so that's, again, that, that's something that's more likely to be dealt with in the in the site plan hearing. So right now, we're talking about the reason, primarily about the rezoning, so.
And if I may, one of the the great things, Mr. Pierce, about this particular property, and Mr. Hayden, is that if I can screen share one more time, I'm just gonna show you one of the plans again. So I think you can see this plan. So you can see this plan of land. So I'm gonna annotate. I can't, okay. So right in this area, I think you can see my hand moving down is Ipswich Street, so it acts as a natural buffer. So that particular street can't be built on, and it's about seventy feet wide, right here to here. So there is a natural, I thought it was only, you know, it's forty feet wide, I apologize. So I was gonna say, didn't look like that, but it's a street line because it's bent, it's a little longer, but it's a forty five foot street going all the way down that can't be built upon. So there is, you know, that that additional buffer, Mr. Hayden, I know it's not everything, but there is a a natural buffer, if you will, provided on this particular property.
The issue, Miss Mann, is that you do one, then the next one's gonna want the same thing, and that's on the other side of that buffer. And it it's, it's not spot zoning because it's, it's contiguous. It's basically contiguous, even though there's a, there's a paper street in there. So that's where, that's where my, that's where my issue comes along, and it just starts moving right down.
Right, and that is true. However, this particular property does at least share some of its southern border. The other properties do not. So you can see, it's like this, this is kind of like encapsulated by, because this land back here is, I think this is wet, but this land back here.
It's all wet back there. It's all wet back there. You're not putting, you're not putting any, you're not building back there, even though it's industrial.
Right about to here is it is, but at the same time, this particular property does have more than one of its boundaries adjacent to an aisle. I'll stop sharing so that you can see everybody, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions from the board? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Please state your name and address prior to answering a question, and please direct all questions to the chair. Does anybody have a question or a comment? Okay, I don't, I'm not hearing anybody.
I think Mr. Ridley is trying to make. Yeah, Mr. Wrigley needs to unmute himself.
Mr. Ridley, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry about that. This is Steven Vitale. I'm his daughter using my computer, so it's Steven Vitale, eleven Park Street.
Okay.
Listen, I'm ninety one years old. And live for fifty two years. I moved from Boston to North Reading. And over the years, I see this business zone, not to be proud of, it's been, it's getting worse as years gone by. Yeah, now, now, and now they want make expanded business zone for up Congress Street. It must worst, worst for the traffic, worst, worst, everybody. We have homes on Parker Street. There's four, five homes on Parker Street. We deserve respect from the town to protect our property, and the town's not doing that, God. I make a business section, it costs me my house. How would you like to buy your house in the morning and see a building of trucks of businesses across the from your homes? Make a decision tonight, make it, listen, if you live in some place, have businesses across from you live, how would you like that? Well, I've been here a long time, and I deserve that respect. There should be no more expansion of the business zone up Parker Street, not at all. We, we have all kinds of trucks, cars come up to me all kinds of days, night and day. The mail trucks come up the street at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, thirty mile hours coming up Parker Street. Those trucks should have been stopped long time ago in the town. They should do sixty two. This is not highway. This is a street over here. It was never built for eighteen wheelers. And guys go on the curvy, the stop sign is, a lot of guys go up for Parker Street, like a left turn on Congress Street, you better walk out. You gotta hug, 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 right side out of the street. Get out of my driveway, I have to wait. That's uptight, I had to back it up, turn around the driveway. Because it's so bad the traffic. Now they want to put the industry up here, that's not right. We have, we should have rights as people on Parker Street. Like, we pay taxes. Maybe taxes twenty two thousand dollars last year's assessment. What, what, how do you get that twenty two thousand dollars? It's just, they don't want to put a business across my home, and I'll pay twenty two thousand dollars more assessment? I'm ninety nine, ninety one years old. I'm ninety-nine, ninety-one years old, but I, I've lived in this town so long and they have not been good to us. The street I live in Boston was much better than the street in, in Parker Street. It's all farm, right? Right? They're very, heavy traffic on Parker Street. It looks with, it's, 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 it's not ready. It has more traffic outside of twenty-eight, it's Parker Street. You still outside my house, I count the cars that go by, twenty, twenty cars go by, uh, a minute of time. Sometimes even more than that. It is gonna get worse when it, it is get back to normal again. It will soon, soon later.
This is, this is Vitale, Rose Marie Vitale of living on Parker Street. I know you just heard my husband. But I am sick and tired of what's going on here. Like my husband stated, we've been here for over fifty years.
Fifty-two years.
Fifty-two years. And they have, that this town has said nothing for the residents of Conker Street. The multistore and us.
We keep our property.
Try to keep our property clean. And my husband's always working out there. My hat's in my mouth when he's working down near the street. For the traffic. At night, we can't get any sleep because of the damn trucks coming by and the cars. There's the lights shine right into our bedroom windows. The matter with the shades down and everything, light still comes in. There's no threat, the traffic runs twenty-four hours a day. We haven't gotten any sleep. First with the farm, with the smell. And, and the older we put up with, the, every time we called the police station or called the town hall, all we heard was. That they had grandfather rights. But where were our rights? We had no rights. We paid our taxes every year. You can check. I, I, I am getting tired of it. My husband and I have been ill. My husband's had heart problems. He's been in the hospital. I've been in the hospital with cancer problems and we can't even get a decent night's sleep here. I would appreciate the town for change. Look at the people that live on Parker Street. The rest of the town doesn't care because they're not living here. And we've always paid our taxes. What are we paying for? No one oversees anything that goes on in the street.
I must think of all the, all the voting. It should be always two thirds vote. It should be a majority vote. And the media helped me, like, not, last we had a vote, that was a fast. This takes like a small group to, to take over the, the thing. Cause it, it's a majority vote. That's not right. And this next one being, could be two thirds majority. In fact, it should be, the last one. This, that should have been a, a, a vote, a, a, a election for that piece of property. That was a big piece, a piece of property. It was a big mistake of people not ready, not buying it. And the town, for one thing, the town could have took over that property. Oh, without, without considering other people. It, it has to show cause, but it, it decides that property. And make, and, and put better part things there than what's, that's there, what's there now. And, and Boston, I know that it, it's all. Western of Boston, they did that there, western of Boston, that people, they had little, they, stake this to go over and they built all sideways condos there. And the people, and the people, uh, uh, going up the street, they lost their homes there. They, so they decided that same property across the street, they could, they did the same thing. They should have taken that property and they put homes there. They could, they, they, they told us, they put nine homes there on that property, they told us at the meeting. It was, it was, it, it was, everyone, but by the town, town to assist sizes and took it and, and. They buy approved that property for the town hall there, or sees complex there, or see, they go spend the day there. That should have been used for that kind of problem, not the business. Now, ask any question you wanna ask me now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ritz. Okay, uh, would you like to, Jill, would you like to address any of that? Do you have, uh?
I, I do believe, you know, I, I appreciate the comments by Mr. and Mrs. Vitale and, and I understand. I think that this particular type of use actually ends up being less burdensome than a residential subdivision. It actually will probably yield less traffic, less noise, and at the times when people want to enjoy their property. The businesses are closed. Um, this isn't going to be, you know, it, it's not a heavy industrial zone. It's, it's highway office. It, it's, it, the uses are, are similar to what's across the street with, with Bobcat. Um, it, there is such a burden with the residential development and that's what this would be if it weren't being developed. As an industrial or office development. Uh, Mr. Cobiello is, you know, an exceptionally, um, thoughtful person, I think. And when it comes time to actually come in for the site plan approvals. I think that, you know, Mr. Vitale and Mrs. Vitale should absolutely participate to ensure. You know, that their property, which is across the street, doesn't have an issue with cars and with, with lights. Um, what they're experiencing now has nothing to do with the property across the street. Um, and any development of it is going to change. Um, you know, the, the, we're doing away with that farm use where there can be some, you know. Slightly unpleasant odors because of the type of farm it was when you have a poultry farm. Um, and we truly do believe that our use is going to not be noxious. It's going to create tax revenue. We're going to be good neighbors and that the most appropriate thing in this area to try to mitigate for the traffic. Is actually this type of development, which is low traffic impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Any other, uh, comments on this?
I have a comment. If they don't wanna put homes there, they could put a, a, a town hall. They would talk about the town hall, that would be a good spot for the town hall. It's, that's, that's, that, that, town halls don't have that much traffic in it. So they could use that property for a town hall.
Well, have you, have you, uh, gone behind the town hall on a regular workday yet?
It's busy.
There's times you can't even fit get in the parking lot out behind the town hall. You go, go take a ride there, you'll see what I mean. I tried to work getting, when I try, I end up parking on the grass. Cause there's no place to park. There were so many vehicles there. So, uh, that's, that's, um, that's just personal experience. So, um, um, does anybody else have any comments? Um, um. Mr. Vitale, as far as, I, I know you, uh, um. You'll be very, I know you, how you'll be, you'll be very careful with what you do. I think that, uh, he needs to know that there'll be screening and things like that, you know. To protect him from, uh, the lights and the, and his, you know. And again, I, I do agree with Jill that, uh, you put a residential development in there and you're gonna get. A lot more cars than are gonna come out of your commercial building, so.
Then they put the business there. And that's, that's what it comes down to. People who care about property. There's a, like, five houses down there, just, just tough luck. That's what people are doing. That's three, all people go home, there's thirty-six people living there. There's gonna be more than thirty-six people living across the street there, working every day.
Taxes on your houses and everything so so every town sometimes have huge areas of industrial and all up against residential and that's how it is. We have not that much so. Have we have to use. I mean, I think that's the thing. I'm sorry that you that that your that your way you lived at this. And I agree Concord Street's a mess. I don't know why it should. It needs to be fixed. You can't even drive down there. I avoid it because the track because the road is in such poor shape. So I agree that that's probably been overlooked, but as far as anything that would happen in this other piece of property, there'd be proper screening and proper buffering. That's part of a site plan review to protect the neighbors and everybody else from any impacts of it. So that will be considered. Of course, on the on the west side of it, there's all there is is another commercial property. So there's not going to be any issues there. And a farm on the other side, so. I I think that you might find that this that if that he'll do a good job and you won't. I think the impact you'll have that you have right now from these vehicles that are coming down there now is probably the limit of what you'll ever have because you probably won't even notice this. So. Any other comments or anything from anybody? Okay. We is we do we have a motion to or a are we just gonna make a recommendation to town meeting or?
It's up to you. If you would like, I have a motion prepared to, you know, for the CPC to support this at town meeting, but you can wait till town meeting if you prefer. It's up to you.
Vincenzo, what's the select board doing? Are they making their motion their their motion to town meeting?
We have not. This has not come up, so I'm assuming that's what it will be, but I think, I mean, up until this point, it's been. I mean, mostly a, you know, CPC DBA issue, like it hasn't been a select board issue. So that's why there hasn't been commentary on it, just because it's a zoning, you know, so it's kind of. You know, well, I mean, I'm sure there's those who will always give a comment of ass, but I don't think it's. So, but I can get back to you on that. You know, or we can, you can even ask when we go. I know you're gonna be at the warrant article meeting. You can ask then. Or I can get you an answer then, so.
Okay, well, I think that I was thinking that when it when it comes up for the select board to hear it, it might be more the ability to have some more input. So that would that would might be the best time for us to then make a decision. But I'll leave it up to the board here. What do you? What's the board think? Chris, what do you?
I'm gonna vote not to support it, so. You guys want to do it today? It's gonna be that for me. I just don't think it's the proper thing to do there.
Okay, Dave.
I think it would go a long way. You know, I think Jill touched on it the last time she presented to. I know it's first, you know, there's steps here. There's a zoning and then there's a site plan submittal. And at that during that process, that's when we can talk about citing, building citing, paving and all that. But I mean, it this is a really important thing to for for us to know. And then I think for people like the Vitalis to understand like, what's this thing gonna look like? And so if if you do attorney man have any any kind of images you can show, I mean, they're conceptual. They're not anything. You know, that we we would, you know, they're not binding kind of things, but this is you've got to be thinking about the sighting of it at this point and where you're gonna put the building and where you're gonna put the paving. And I think having some comfort of what you're gonna actually do and how much buffer there could be, because if you go down Concord Street, there's some buildings and primarily on the right where where Mr. Coviello is right now that are set back enough and the activities in the back and there's really there's really not a lot of activity happening on those buildings if they're set back enough. And that could be anything here, and I don't know. That's why I can't pass judgment on it without knowing what it looks like.
Well, tonight we're just primarily dealing with the zoning article, not with the actually site plan, so. So in other words, if there is if the zoning article doesn't go through, then then that would mean that the there would be no, you know, site plan.
Exactly. We do understand the position that puts, you know, Vice Chair, you know, Chris i- in the same position as all of us is we we just want to know maybe what it's gonna look like, because I'm I'm leaning towards, because I do think it's it makes good sense. It is part of and it neighbors Bobcat. But I don't think with how narrow park that Concord Street is right up in that section too, I don't think it should have any. It should have a pretty decent buffer back back until you, you know, it's gotta have a driveway, but it should go back fully, fully, you know, land all the way back for for a fair distance. And it looks like the the parcel, our souls plural, could provide that that buffer. But I don't know. I just conceptually, I can see it in my head, but I don't know exactly what is being planned.
Right. Hang on, Ryan, do you have a?
I'll be honest, I share Chris and David sentiment on that. I think for me, it's a good example what we just looked at with the overlay district. And the the added benefit of seeing the plan and kind of getting a feel for what the intention was to support that. And here, without seeing that, I feel as though we're kind of, you know, we're letting the Trojan horse in if we approve this at this point without without having any idea of what's. I mean, I know there's a site plan review, but we only have so much leverage at that point. And I feel like you know, getting some sort of commitment for what the layout of this is gonna be and understanding of the amount of vehicle traffic, the amount of parking spots would obviously impact that and the size of the building. And I think all those things I'd have to take into consideration before supporting for for all the reasons that that Chris mentioned, you know, it's the creep of this industrial zone that, you know, is difficult to justify unless you can kind of make the case that this is truly gonna be less impactful than what it's currently zoned as. And with the information we have today, I don't think I can definitively say that. I can be told that, but I think it still leaves the door open for things to change. And for, you know, the concerns that Mr. Vitali brought up to be realized, if we don't have some sort of commitment, we all have heard so far.
Jeremiah, get any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I I mean, I have to admit, I mean, I know that stretch of road well. And I have to admit that when I first looked at this, I it was difficult to conceptually see how that fit. Particularly given the the series of houses on the other side of the street. You know, if this parcel of land was a bit further west and south, then we're dealing with more industrial on the other side of the road. I mean, easy, no brainer. I mean, that would make it a simple determination. But that is a unique stretch of road with a unique intersection. And having gone to that farm many times myself, I I I struggle to imagine how that would work. That said, I understand the arguments for it. I also understand our ability to help shape it through the next phase of this process to kind of reach the goal of mitigating those 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 issues. But I can't picture it. So until I can kind of see how this could conceptually work, it is very difficult to.
Well, I think that I think I think that's why I I said we shouldn't. We can wait till we do the either have another hearing ourselves or to take a look at something or we can go, we can wait for the the select board's meeting. Because by that time, there'll be an opportunity to bring a lot more information forward if they can generate it. So that might make it easier for us to make a decision then or at town meeting, whichever. Whichever works the best, so. So is that a is that acceptable to all on the board here? Okay, all right. Mr. Coviello, did you want to make any comments tonight? You're muted, so you'd have to unmute, so.
Yeah, the only comments I want to make is is that there's two houses across the street now. My plan is not to do anything with them at this point, only because if it's industrial, we would do one thing. If it's residential, we would do another. So I I didn't want to spend a lot of money to get all kinds of plans to show everybody what was gonna happen, because if it goes residential, it's totally, totally different plans. It doesn't it doesn't go, you know, the way it is. But so the people understand that the driveway for that land is very close to Bobcat of Boston. The driveway that is going to be for there, it's really close to Bobcat of Boston. So the driveway is not going to be in inside to the left of those two houses that are now. Also, you know, chicken farm that was there at Seven Acre Farm, they had a lot of traffic going in and out of there. Because people came in, bought their stuff, worked out. I don't think we'll even have half of of the traffic that that would entail for for our business. Because we just don't have that kind of volume goes in and out. It's not a business you need to buy something and walk out again. It's the business. We go there in the morning, we do, the trucks go out and then they come back in the afternoon. So I just feel that, you know, the driveway, everybody's concerned with the driveway. That way is very, very close to Bobcat of Boston, because that's what the entrance is for that piece of land. So that's, you know, that my comments that I would like to everybody to know. I wish I could have a plan set up so you guys can see, but I I I don't think is appropriate at this time. Only because we're asking for rezoning, not a plan. I would have to come before the the planning board to get anything approved later on, obviously, if it gets approved. As far as the the selectmen is concerned, if if they feel that they want to meet with us, I will be glad to have Jill set up a meeting with you guys, the select board, and talk to them. See what their, you know, input is or see what they feel that it's they want to do.
Yeah, okay, I think I think that was one of the concerns was being able to see, get some kind of a, you know, conceptual idea of what might happen there. Might make the difference between whether people were comfortable with the rezoning or not. I think that's what the comments were.
And and I think, Mr. Mr. Pierce, that we would be able to give a very rough concept plan, you know, show where we're going to retain the two homes, because really those are going to act as a buffer, because there can't cannot be. Would you mind if I apologize? Would you mind if I shared one more time?
Go ahead.
So when you see the actual plan, I'm gonna show you the one with the nineteen ninety-one plan. So I think, can you all see that?
Not yet.
No.
No, yeah, okay, let's see. Share. Here we go. Now you can, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, what is going to be a continued buffer for the project is actually the existing homes. There's no intent to take these down. We have to reconfigure the lot line somewhat because of the fact that residential lots have to maintain one hundred and sixty feet of frontage. But in in this particular district, these have to have two hundred feet of frontage. So we have to actually work out some issues with regard to how we would break up the lot. But the way it would work is we would retain these structures. I I don't recall, Mr. Coviello, if he was going to keep the barn. These two barns are not gonna be kept. They're chicken coops. But these would be, so you'd have that natural buffer. And then because these properties exist here because of the setbacks, we would not be able to even locate a building until somewhere in this vicinity, which is, you know, two hundred, three hundred feet back from from Concord Street. So there's going to be the opportunity to properly buffer. And relative to this side, as I said, there's a forty-foot automatic anyway, plus the setback. And the board during the special permit, I mean, the site plan approval process can require us even to give a greater setback because we have but a residential zone. So because of that, there's that additional setback that you do have the authority to require, and that would push us back into this area. Our intent is definitely to hug the the Bobcat area. So I guess the whole point here is is that the effect on the neighboring properties that are residential is being mitigated tremendously just by the existing nature of the property and how you'd actually form your access. So again, you'd come in, you'd have to go down about two, three hundred feet more. You have to go down three hundred feet, because this is two eighty-one to here, to here. You'd have to go down that far before you could even begin to put in a building. And then, you know, back here, you have some wetland lines and you have other issues. So, you know, the property is not gonna be overdeveloped.
If I may, if I may, you all missed my point. The reason why I don't want to rezone this property is it pushes the zone into residential, makes it larger, and it allows it to go the next step when the next piece of property is sold or they decide to take it from being a farm. That's my problem. I know we have restrictions and I know there's a site plan review. I know there's all these other things, Joe. But, you know, it it there's, I haven't seen a good reason to take this property and make it a business property yet. You know, office or whatever. It I haven't been convinced. And what you're telling me is stuff that we have control if it's ever changed from a residence A. And I know we have control over what that becomes as a residence A also, because it would have to come in as a subdivision. I've been doing this a long time. I understand that. I'm looking at what the zoning you're asking to change is. You're asking to put business against another piece of residential property, which then is gonna be able to allow that one easily to go to the next one. And suddenly, we're on top of the homes. Right now, we're not on top of homes. If you put in a multifamily something in there, they choose to move there. These other people are living there now. And we're moving the zone into their backyards.
Well, in fact, it's into the across the street. There's no.
Excuse me, Joe. It is not across the street when you move it next to the horse farm.
Oh, oh, this area.
Okay, and then the horse farm decides they don't want to be a horse farm anymore because there's more money in doing something else. So they move it to the next. And then there's no way to stop it. That's not spot zoning, because it's connected. And it doesn't matter if you've got one lot line or two lot lines in the in the industry office zone. It matters that you have a lot line. It doesn't give it more. It doesn't give it more strength that it has two lot lines, like you said before. As far as I'm concerned, all right? So that's and everybody seems to be missing that. You're all talking how we're gonna design this stuff. We don't know what you're gonna even thought about putting there. You know, other than a business. So that's that's where I'm coming from.
And we do definitely understand it. It's the position that, you know, doing creating a residential subdivision here is more tax negative, more traffic impactful than would be an industrial zone. You know, relative to traffic, a normal.
Relatively speaking, it is not. If you get fifty, if you get fifty cars going in there, Joe, half of them are coming out of from Main Street. The other half of them come from the highway. So you're gonna impact that whole length of traffic. If you put nine houses in there by the traffic engineers between seven and nine, you're gonna have maybe ten trips.
Right, but throughout the day, you generate. The traffic generation reports are clear.
They're trucks in an office area during the day. And I think that's what I just heard from the neighbor across the street.
You you heard that there was tremendous amount of traffic generated along the street because it's shared. It's it's there's a lot of industrial traffic because there's businesses down one end. Putting a residence here is is only gonna increase it all day long and on the.
Okay.
I mean, that's that's, you know, it's and it's.
I was I was I I. The gentleman also, and I understand that, Joe. Okay.
And I understand. I mean, this is this is our position, and I understand that the board has the obligation to review and make its recommendation to town meeting as to whether or not the zone should extend. I mean, whether or not another property is going to be also part of that extension shouldn't really be part of the conversation. It should be limited to what we are looking at in this lot and if it's appropriate. And if the board.
That's that's I look I look towards the future. I don't look for today. That's in our title, Community Planning Commission.
Right.
We look for the plan, what's gonna happen, and what can we affect?
You can't you can't. Indifferentiated fears for the future, though, isn't part of it. To think that something's gonna be rezoned, we don't know. I get it. If you don't think that this is a good plan, that's one thing, but it to determine it based on a possibility of of a rezoning, it's still subject to town meeting approval. And if town meeting deems it to be a worthy change, then, you know.
That's right. If it's a worthy change, it's a worthy change. I don't have to agree with that change, but if the townspeople, if the townspeople vote that way, that's that's a different story. I can't stop it and I won't stop it.
I understand.
Okay. Okay, Jill, one of the things that occurred to me is, first of all, is that if your plan that you were just showing showed the properties across the street.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry. I have another plan that will.
Because then then the people could see really if there's an impact on them.
I think I just want to see. I don't know if this plan does or doesn't. Okay, one second. I might have something. The area I have an aerial, Mr. Pierce, that definitely does. Can you? Can you see this now?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so basically, I'm just gonna orient you. Here, here are those chicken coops. Basically, it looks like they're real big buildings, but they're chicken coops. That's what this is. And here are the two homes.
Yeah.
So here's the property line goes just like that. So here are the homes that are across the street. They're probably where we'll we would do the development. This is where it would enter. Because remember on the plan, this is part of the frontage. It would come in here and the development would be here.
So kind of out behind Bobcat.
Yes, it's basically, you know, if you will, draw the line. Sergio, I'm correct, right? That's what we had discussed. It will be right in here.
That is correct.
Okay, hopefully that that helps a little to give people an idea of where they, you know. So if those residential houses stay out front, then basically they'll be residential across the street from a residential.
Sergio wanted to be able to have it blend and not just, there's no purpose to taking those buildings down. They're good buildings, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I believe he will do the best he can. Okay. Do I have any other comments on this? And I guess we've kind of agreed that we're gonna wait till after the the select board's hearing to perhaps make a decision at town meeting. And that's okay. I just wonder, Chris, where, you know, we we we've lost so much of our commercial land to residential everywhere. It seemed like not that, you know, that it wasn't such a bad thing to gain a little of it back.
Yeah, but you know.
Now, excuse me, there are a lot of houses right now that are but commercial property because they wanted to and they forced us to let them do it. As opposed to.
Well, that's right. They forced us to let them do it.
No planning there other than we were forced to let them build residential houses as opposed to having some say about whether there was residential up against commercial.
That's right. That's right.
So adding us a little commercial on is not a bad thing, I think, in this particular case, especially within a.
It's it's just, you gotta remember the snowball effect that it happens.
Excuse me, in an IO district, which is a pretty benign district, it's no heavy, nothing heavy in that district, which is it's kind of a nice district. It's better than some of the others that we would have. So. So that's my comment on it. If we, okay, Jill, you can unshare your. Thank you. That I mean, you know, if you did it with with lots, it might also be, you could see the lot lines, Mike.
Yeah, I tried to actually superimpose them, and I'm not that good.
Well, I mean, you're gonna, again, it's gonna be another, you're gonna have to go to the select board anyway.
So so we will be invited to that meeting?
I haven't heard the date yet of the public hearings for warrant articles, but yes, I think the town administrator's office will notify you of that.
And so what I'm hearing, Mr. Pierce, is maybe if I could do, if I could get a plan that shows perhaps even that aerial, if I could get some sort of a concept plan superimposed, that would be helpful, not only for the board members, but also probably for the selectmen as well. And then.
Because they can see that their house might not be across the street from a commercial enterprise, might be across the street from another house.
Sure. I'll I'll do that. I'll I'll make sure I have something prepared.
So, you know.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Then I'm gonna close this hearing for now. And do I need? I don't need to continue this, do I? Danielle, we can just. Okay, so before I do those, Sergio, any comments? You want last comments you'd like to make? Okay.
I think I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna close this this public hearing. I thank you all very much for attending and for bringing your comments and to this and will obviously take the whole thing under advisement. We'll look a little more at it at the select board meeting and and make our decision probably at the town meeting and.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank. Okay. So we got some minutes and then we should do the minute.
Actually, we have one more zoning hearing, and this would be very brief, but yeah, the reason for this one is.
Zoning map amendment. Sorry.
And that that would be only if the citizens petition for industrial office passes. We will also need an accompanying zoning amendment to update the date on the zoning map. The other zoning, the overlay district that Mr. Wheeler introduced already has that built in, but this one does not. So if one gets passed over or doesn't pass, we would also not, we would also pass over this one. But I can read the hearing notice for that.
Can I just, are you making a recommendation for Concord Street to recommend at town meeting or?
Not tonight.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do, Vincenzo, you have to leave?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
It's a public hearing. Do you have to continue it?
No, it just. They don't have to make a recommendation and if they want to, but it's just, they're just required to hold the hearing to have it on more.
Take the input.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Vincenzo. If you need to go, go ahead. We'll.
Yeah, my my apologies. And then, yeah, I mean, Danielle, maybe we can, you can even circle back with me or even Mike about this tomorrow, just to see if whatever we gotta.
Yeah.
And I'll I'll probably need to follow up with you about the next thing we're talking about, which is the five G stuff, so.
Yeah, I saw. Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little crunched for time tonight. So, but, but yeah, so well, everyone have a have a nice night, you know.
All right, thank you. So you want to read the public hearing notice and we'll open the hearing and there'll really be not much.
Right.
Do it.
Oh, boy. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section five, the Community Planning Commission, excuse me, of the Town of North Reading will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-one, commencing at eight fifteen P M via Zoom. As a virtual meeting access information is given. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties the opportunity to comment on a proposed amendment to the North Reading zoning bylaw, which has been submitted to the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting to update Section two hundred dash thirty zoning map with a new revision date pending approval of one or more zoning map amendments by town meeting and the Attorney General's Office. A complete copy of the text of the proposed amendment to the North Reading zoning bylaw is on file with the town clerk and is available for inspection on the Town of North Reading website under zoning amendments. In and in the Community Planning Commission Office, Monday through Thursday, eight A M to four P M and Friday, eight A M to one P M by appointment only. The full number is given advertised in the North Reading transcript, March eighteenth and March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Just the proposed new date of the zoning map would become June fifth, sending Attorney General approval of the industrial office rezoning map amendment. And that's that's really all there is to that.
Okay. Okay, any comments from everybody on the board? This is a conditional thing, you know, basically, if there's any. Well, actually, if we do the overlay zone for Bruce Wheeler, that would still trigger the rezone the zoning map.
Well, that one already has a provision. Because it was our sponsored article, we were able to write it so that it included a zoning map. Well, that one already has a provision because it was our sponsored article. We were able to write it so that it included a zoning map update. But this one, you know, being a citizen's petition that we didn't write, we had to add it after.
Okay, all right. Okay, so any comments from the board again? So any comments from the public on this? So hearing done. I guess I can close the public hearing and we can call that a hearing and away we go. Um, okay. Leaves us with some minutes, which we, and then the five G, let's do the minutes first. Do you, Ryan, do you have, can you see those? He doesn't have any motions, huh, tonight?
Um, no, I'm sorry. I didn't upload it into the sheriff file in time. Um, the, so the motion would be to approve the March second, twenty twenty one minutes as written.
I still move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, so it's five in favor, no opposed. So, okay, Danielle, next.
Okay, um, okay, so the the five G, do you want to launch into that now?
No, I want to do the March eighteen minutes. Oh, they're not out there? Okay, then let's do the five G. Do we have any ZBAs anyway? I didn't see any.
Not for this meeting.
Okay, all right. Okay, five G.
I know I came to the meeting late. Can I just ask, did you do three oh three Main Street?
Yes.
You did in the beginning. Okay, I missed it.
Okay.
Oh, we approved that. Do you need signatures, Debbie?
Yes, I will need signatures.
All right, you gonna be around tomorrow?
Yep.
All right, I'll give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there are, there are two things that we need to look at. And I tried to summarize this in the memo, but basically in order to have some regulation for small wireless facilities, which come with a different set of, you know, timeframes and are a faster turnaround that the town is required to respond to and has less control over. Town Council has advised us to recommend a policy to the select board. The select board can choose to pass it or not. It's up to them, but the recommendation, I think, from us would be to have a policy for application procedures and for aesthetics. And it applies both to small cell installations and to utility installations in the right of way. The policy is basically written, it was mostly written by town council with some additions from me, where I saw other communities had added certain provisions. They have reviewed that. They're fine with it. They ask us to fill in the blanks of everything having to do with aesthetics, height, pole diameter, things like that. I did as much research as I could to see what other communities are doing. They're all very consistent. But a key difference that we have to contend with is that RMLD believes that most of the installations that will be requested in the town are going to be on their poles on Main Street specifically. So everything that we pass really should be consistent with what RMLD can do on their poles. Because if we pass a set of regulations that's different, it will impact not only small wireless installations on RMLD poles, but it will also impact other utility installations on RMLD, RMLD poles. And we really don't want to complicate what they already have in place. So I looked at the specifications from RMLD. I spoke with John McDonough at RMLD, who was very helpful and is happy to review our policy and aesthetic recommendations for consistency. And so what I've done is I've created, you know, from KP and for myself, we have this draft policy in there. And the goal would be if we were to look at it, decide whether we were comfortable with what was in it in order to recommend it to the select board and then they could take it up. Their next meeting is April twelfth, and I've been told that they can have agenda time to devote to this on April twelfth. Um, now, in terms of figuring out what these things look like, it's very hard to find a community that has had a good set of aesthetic regulations and then look at what was actually installed in the town, because many of them have regulations and no installations. Many towns that have installations don't have any regulations. They're just there. The coverage maps show some areas where you can find and pinpoint poles, but other coverage areas shown, there are no small cell installations. I don't know if that's because the coverage is achieved through regular tall cell towers at the same time. I I'm just not sure of that, but there were many instances where I thought I was driving to take a picture of a pole and no pole. And then I would be driving elsewhere and I would say, oh, there's one. So I tried to put in as many images as I could. It typically look the same. They're tacked on to these, you know, the tops of, you know, these utility poles. And RMLD has provided many, many, many different types of equipment in their diagrams that they put. And I put that in the sheriff file too, just to kind of demonstrate. There can be a pretty wide array, but typically the ones that I was seeing were of the top, it looks like the little Q-tip on top of a wooden pole. Or you can have, you know, the the kind of, they look like those arrays, they're the straight up and down vertical. So I tried to put a few samples of of images in there. I don't think we have tremendous, you know, leeway as far as making them look pretty. Although we can prohibit them from being on our decorative light poles, we can restrict them further in historic districts, et cetera. Part two is a zoning amendment, and everything I just described has to do with in the public right of way. Utility installation in the in the right of.
And we have what happens on private property.
Right, so that's why we would also, we are recommended also by KP to have a zoning amendment to govern what goes onto private property. Most towns don't have this and it's good to have it in place just in case. I have submitted an article to town meeting to pass a zoning amendment that is that is, it's a very simple zoning amendment and it refers back to an aesthetics policy. Now, we don't have to have that policy written the day of town meeting. But KP is recommending that it be consistent with whatever the board passes, the select board passes for their policy. They would use the same set of aesthetic regulations. So I guess what I'm saying is there are, there's a little bit of, there's urgency and there's not. There's urgency in the sense that tomorrow Verizon could come to RMLD and say, we want to put, you know, installations on several poles on Main Street. And we don't have a plan in place, so they pretty much get to do it. And RMLD will have their own guidelines and their own rules, but we won't have had any of our own aesthetic, which our aesthetics kind of have to match what RMLD needs anyway. There's not too much more that we're going to be able to do on their polls. So my hope was we could make a recommendation to pass along the policy as it's drafted to the select board. They could choose to pass it or not. We would go ahead with our warrant article with, which is the pretty simple zoning amendment that refers to aesthetics that the CPC will have on file, which we can develop on our own and we would make sure they were in, you know, they were consistent with whatever the select board passes. That's kind of how I would, was hoping this would play out in terms of our our timing and taking care of this issue. But of course, you know, we can proceed anyway you see fit.
Okay. So what I didn't, in the sheriff file, we have the latest two proposals from KP approved by KP, which is the one for the right of way and the one for private property.
Right.
But we've still got to fill it in. You said some.
I.
Fill it in now or or did you already fill it in?
I filled it in. I tried to fill it in with what is pretty consistent as far as what other communities have done. But I also compared it to the RMLD specs. For example, a lot of community say that you have to have your installation. Anything pole mounted has to be, you know, between eight and ten feet off the ground. RMLD says twelve feet, so I put in twelve feet. KP suggested we fill in, you know, what is the maximum pole diameter? Well, I asked RMLD and they said we don't recommend that you do that as part of your aesthetics, because pole diameter is entirely dependent on what other equipment has to be on that pole. So we choose our class of pole based on that and not based on what it looks like. And we really can't, I mean, they didn't really recommend that we do that. So I, most communities are not doing that, so I'm recommending taking that out. So I have filled in as much as I can. I don't really think there's anything blank other than where I've recommended we delete.
Well, you know, I might, my, my, my concern about some of the things that they're doing and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that they have some of their engineers involved in this. Because this, this equipment is relatively heavy. I don't remember what the weight of it was, was two hundred pounds or something. I forget what the what the weight was, but you, the further up the pole you put that, the more leverage it has on tipping the pole over. So, you know, so the diameter of the pole then becomes rather important, because if the pole's too skinny, it won't carry the weight, et cetera, et cetera.
Uh, I'm thinking, Warren, that RMLD is gonna tell them that if you gotta put something up there bigger, then you're gonna have to change the pole.
Yeah.
That's an, that's an expense. And and so RMLD's got to control that that way. They're not gonna let something dangerous go up there. And so it's kind of hard for us.
There's my concern. I mean, I, you know, enough about physics to know that there's a and you you can, you can get yourself in a little bit of trouble here if you're not careful about the making sure that you, that the tail doesn't wag the dog here.
Mr. Chairman, I think through the notes on all the diagrams from RMLD, you know, the note number six, RMLD engineering will perform an engineering load analysis of each pole to determine appropriate pole height in class. So I mean, I think that's how they approach it. What's gonna be mounted on it?
Well, if we've limited it or if they've tell us that we have to limit it twelve feet, no lower than twelve feet. That's a significant difference from the eight feet that everybody else was doing.
Right, which I can put twelve feet into that provision, but pole diameter is different. Most, so KP is recommending that, of course, we they're, they are required to show that they're structurally sound and they're not gonna fall down. But what RMLD was saying is don't make pole width an aesthetic recommendation, because yes, it's, it's maybe important what it looks like. But it's much more important to be sure it will properly support the equipment.
Right, right. Yeah, so I agree that it's probably doesn't fit under aesthetics.
Right.
It would fit under engineering.
Right, so that's covered.
Yeah. All right, all right. Well, I'm just, you know, it was, it sounds a little inconsistent for a bit there, so.
Consistent, because RMLD has their own requirements that they don't want our, any of our aesthetics to be in conflict with. So it is, I mean, in some places it could be inconsistent, but I looked at other, I only addressed pole diameter because KP suggested we do it as an aesthetic consideration, but no other communities are doing that. And I think for good reason, because you really can't make it an aesthetic consideration. It's it's an engineering question. So this is how, these are all of the things I've just tried to research, each one of them, and I filled in those blanks to try to make sense of it, so.
So what do we have to do with this now? Do we have to vote on it and then send it to the select board or do we?
Yeah, if you think it's.
Already.
Well, I've already submitted the warrant article. It's basically a placeholder with with some details to be added, but it's basically written. Yeah, so as it's drafted here, the way I've given it to you was what, you know, we would pass along to this, to the select board, one for their policy, two for the warrant. Unless you, you know, if you have objections or if you think it should be dealt with differently or if you don't.
Well, I don't know about that. What I will though is ask the rest of the board if they'd like to bring this back at another meeting to actually do a vote on it. Or if you feel comfortable with what, if you've, if you've had a chance to read it. If you haven't, you might want to, and then maybe at the next meeting we'll vote on it. Would that be acceptable? Danielle?
I mean, it can be. The only thing would be, so when I asked the town administrator when the select board could consider the policy, he suggested April twelfth would be a good time for them. And then I think we're really into more of the town meeting related stuff. I mean, I.
Want a decision tonight?
I, you know, but if you're not ready to vote on what's in there, if you need more time to digest it and think about it, then I don't think we're gonna be able to make a recommendation on April twelfth, so.
Well.
I mean, no one has approached the town yet for this. They've approached Reading, but they have not approached RMLD for us. So.
I I have a question.
Yeah.
This is a, this is a select board's policy, right? Doesn't have to go to town meeting.
The zoning does, but the policy.
The zoning does, but the zoning and this are not tied hand in hand. We could, we could push the zoning on and and we could give the selectmen a draft that we have not yet finalized, so that they have something to look at. Um, and we can continue on with the zoning amendment uh, through town meeting in June. Get that, get that in, you know, see if we can get that passed in 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 the code. Um, and then by then, you know, right after that, the selectmen will be up to speed, because they'll be looking at stuff on their own, hopefully. And they'll be able to, their next meeting maybe, look at the 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 two items and vote on those and 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 make their policies at that time. So I don't think it's really out of line to 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 hold off and make sure we're, we're, you know what's going on in these policies. And I think, Warren, that's what you're thinking of, right?
Yeah, I want.
Try not to rush you.
Be comfortable with them to make sure we don't have any input. It sounds like Danielle's done a lot of research already.
Oh, she has. I've, I've read through them. I mean, not enough, but you know, with these, these kind of things, you have to read them more than once.
Yeah.
I'm sure, Danielle, you read them a dozen times before you did anything.
Yeah, it's, it is hard to visualize, though. I mean, you're looking at this technical stuff that it doesn't have a clear picture with what it actually physically looks like and
Right.
half of it's not up to us anyway. But no, I think if you want to go ahead with, you know, the zoning article, which would be taken up at town meeting and which is basically all written, and then we can be working on as an aesthetic policy in the meantime, you know, the select board does not have to have passed their policy before town meeting. KP was recommending that they do that at first, but then they told me really, they just should be consistent. That's all. They should just.
Right, right, and that's.
But not on April twelfth, because I don't.
So so primarily the zoning. There's the article that discusses the zoning is just, just to allow them in the, into our residential zones, is that?
No, they're already allowed.
Okay, that's the federal.
To, it's to to give guidance for the application procedures, fees, and then to, not fees specifically, but to say that we can set fees and to say that we can set aesthetic, reasonable aesthetic regulations. But those aesthetic regulations don't have to be worked into the text of the zoning. They just have to be passed by the CPC at a public hearing. They can be amended from time to time. They're on file with the town clerk, just like our site plan review regulations.
So we really don't have much to discuss on this. Basically, we just have to agree that we're going to support the zoning article. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, and then we'll support the zoning article and then basically if we get the the rest of it put together, that's fine. If if it happens at some point slowly, shortly thereafter, that would be good enough.
Yeah, I think it would. And I mean, just something to point out about the way the zoning article is set up is what the procedure that it creates is it creates an a a modified version of a site plan review. We can't require a special permit, so it can't be our normal site plan review process, which does require a special permit.
Right.
Expedited simplified special permit that would be inserted into the zoning with, as we said, our aesthetic regulations to be, you know, decided by the CPC and kept on file.
Okay, so do you have a motion for us to recommend the zoning article alone?
Not yet, because actually, so what I wanted to talk to you about was if we do want, you know, as far as the zoning amendment, we have to schedule the public hearing, which I think at this point now, because we can't meet the first Tuesday in May because of the election, looks like it would be May eighteenth. Um, so we can advertise for that. We did all of our public hearings, but we didn't do this one, because we just were not far enough along with this one. But I can, I want to schedule it for May eighteenth then.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll do that. And then in terms of recommendation to the select board for the policy, I can just pass along to, you know, Vincenzo and, you know, Mike Gilberto, that um, we're not really right, ready to recommend the aesthetics policy yet and that we would probably have to recommend that it take place, you know, either shortly before or shortly after town meeting.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I, that's what I was gonna say, give us, at least at our next meeting, perhaps we would, we would have had an opportunity, all of us, to really review that and 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 provide you with comments if we felt it was necessary, or just at least I didn't know that we're all in favor of, they're okay, that we don't have any questions on it. That's basically what I was trying to buy a little time for us to put a little more time into reading.
Right.
So, so that's what I would like to do there. So, okay, so that's good. So May eighteenth, then we'll do the, we'll do the zoning article, public hearing and and we'll move, go from there.
Great.
Okay. That's pretty much us, unless you got some specific.
You gotta continue a public hearing, Warren.
For.
Oh, Reading lumber.
Reading lumber.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I I kind of took that off my thing, because I knew it had to be continued, because I read it.
Right, but we gotta do it.
All right, okay, let's, let's make a motion to, to continue the public hearing. Do you have that motion already or we just need to make that?
Um, I can read it. Let's just.
It's much easier when you should have just forwarded that to Ryan. He could have read it for you.
You know what Debbie just said? Could you just put it in the sheriff file? And I said, sure, and then I forgot to do it.
Hang on a minute now. First, I need to reopen that. I need to open that public hearing first.
Right.
So I'm gonna open the public hearing for one ten, one twenty-four Main Street, Reading Lumber, Special Permit, Flood Plane, Special Permit. Okay, now you can uh make a motion.
Okay, um, I moved at the CPC vote to uh grant the requested continuance for one ten to one twenty-four Main Street until April twentieth, twenty twenty-one at eight P M.
We'll move. Second.
I have a motion, a second by Mr. Redloff, so uh, all in favor, please say aye. And opposed, let the record show five in favor, no opposed, uh, and they are continue. Okay, so do you have a planning administrator updates of any kind or?
They're they're mostly schedule related. Um, I just wanted to, you know, I did wanna bring up the fact that we won't have a meeting on May fourth because of the election. I don't know if you wanna do anything different as far as scheduling, um, you know, I I I know.
Meeting and see what we got pending and then we'll look at that.
Okay, sure. Now, one of the reasons I was asking because was because I know Chris had brought up earlier, um, Bark and Roll had asked if we would we were gonna be meeting any earlier than May eighteenth, if they wanted to do a site plan review. There's not much more time than that to advertise for that, though, so I don't know that moving a meeting date up would really do anyone any good. Um, so, okay, we can see how things are looking after the, you know, the April twentieth meeting. Um, as far as that application, I didn't know if I I know that it was brought up earlier as far as what type of review did we decide that 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 yes, it would be a site plan review or?
I think. Warren, I think that was to you.
Okay, oh, you you, well, whether we whether Bark and Roll needed a site plan review?
Yeah, and actually, I'm sorry, I realize not everyone was on at this point. Should I just explain?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so the so Bark and Roll, which is at two eleven Main Street, um, is uh, would like to purchase the property at two fifteen Main Street to expand the business and um, it is now currently a hair salon or was a hair salon would be going to um, the uh, you know, dog related, you know, having to do with grooming and boarding and um various things related to caretaking of dogs, um, and normally a change of use does trigger a site plan review. There are also some exterior changes, like an exercise area and a fenced area. Um, at the same time, two eleven did Main Street did not go through a site plan review at the time, um. I don't really know why I think at the time it just wasn't sent to us because it wasn't on the previous building inspector's radar, so we just, I think we just kinda didn't know. Um, but in both cases, they did have to go to the Z B A for 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 a special use permit, so we wouldn't be deciding the use. It would may be more review of the physical changes and also any changes to parking, any changes to, you know, how the site was to be functioning, um. So I just, you know, it's.
Of operation.
Hours of operation, right, of course, things like that. So the question has been asked of me, does this require a site plan review? Um, I had initially told the applicant, yes, it does, um, you know, after Warren and I had had spoken about it, um, but it I just, I know Chris had brought it up and I didn't know if there was any further discussion about it.
Well, just again, besides the fact that it's a change in use and the fact that an original site plan review wasn't done and was supposed to have been done cuz the other dog places did have to go through site plan review. So, um, you know, I I it just seemed that this one should that we should at least take a look. And the other thing is that the um, in in the other ones, you know, there was there was questions, concerns about the noise, about the barking and how that was all, you know, what they had done to mitigate it. And I think those two sites are radically different as far as physical uh barriers to the sound and and everything is concerned, so. Um, I it just seemed to me that we should with that we that in deference to the neighbors in that neighborhood that we should give them an opportunity to uh to know what's going on there and and uh not have suddenly have barking dogs right next door to them when they weren't there before. So uh, it just seemed to me that we that that that's why I thought a site plan review would have been a good idea cuz we did it for the other ones, you know, so. Um, does anybody else?
I'm trying to think of which other ones you're talking about, Warren.
The ones that were down by, well, I don't think they're there anymore. I think the one that was down by Park Street there, which they they're not there anymore, I think.
What, the veterinary hospital?
Where, yeah, they were out behind it.
Yeah, they they were, they were there and then they came in because they they were doing something different, I think.
Yeah.
But they had always been there and then they came in because they they changed what they were doing, I believe. I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, this just going from a hair salon to to a to a doggy daycare place, that that's that's a change. That's certainly.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not saying this not, I'm not saying this not a change.
Yeah.
Uh, the, you know, where they were the last time it was a change too, but um, what they are now.
And basically, everybody kind of agreed that even the building inspector, they should have had a site claim review, but we have no idea why it didn't get done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, you know, I just think that we, you know, it can be a a one a one meeting thing, you know, I mean, but but just so that the neighbors. And we have a uh
So.
A chance to be transparent about what's happening.
Right, the 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 to go to the zoning board to get the variance to have that in that location doesn't need a site plan review done ahead of time, right? It could be done after the fact. Is that correct?
As you know, as you well know, many times people have gone to the zoning board of appeals ahead of coming to us and walked in saying, we're allowed to do this even though we didn't like it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Obviously, the answer to that is yes. We've been the victims of that many times in the past.
Yep.
I'm talking about.
Yep.
The use wouldn't be in question. It would be whether we wanted to put conditions that would make the use more palatable. So the use question will really be in front of the Z B A, so the change. Right, but we're not deciding whether or not it can be a doggy daycare. It just, it just would be a question of like what the site would be looking like and how to mitigate in terms of hours of operation or anything.
And 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 noise, I mean, you know, I mean, again, yeah, are you familiar with the with the existing one?
Yeah, me?
Yeah. At all?
Yeah.
Take a look. There there.
Well, you know, if you.
There's like a fifteen foot wall behind them and the dogs down here. And everything, spend a spend about a half hour there and you'll see how much noise you can hear from that. Now take it over to the other one where there's no, not near as much physical barrier for the sound and see what and see what you think.
Okay.
And there's that that small building right next door has a parenting class thing in it.
Which building next door, left to right?
Your Menadonok, used to be Menadonok Spring Water, where you get the water at the thing there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got a parenting class thing there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, again, take a look.
Now, that that was a change of use. They didn't come to us for that.
Um, it's it's. So, and it was.
Yeah, it wasn't an off, it was a, it was a water dispensing thing, right?
Well, actually, it was two parts. There was a real estate agent there, then there was a travel agent in there. And uh, and actually Kenneth Iverster Insurance was there fifty years ago.
Well, that's fifty years ago, so.
Well, I'm just saying. There's been an office use rolling over and over and over and it still is.
Okay.
But again, they have people in there, you know, parents and kids and all that stuff, and you're gonna move that very close to them, just across the driveway. So, I mean, I'm thinking about all the possibilities that are going on here and whether or not.
Yeah, but you you gotta remember that you you yeah, noise between hard two hard surfaces and it just reverberates also. That's that can always be a problem, right?
Yeah, so how they gonna, what they gonna do, they are gonna gonna contain it, you know, what their what their plan is, you know, to collect the two properties. You know, to give them a bigger yard, cuz if they take on more dogs, they need more yard. And they have precious small yard now.
Well, an outdoor enclosure for um, an exercise area was one thing that they had mentioned.
Yeah, so that's one of the things you're gonna want. I mean, there's there's physical changes as well there.
Right, well, no, no, the physical changes is what it is what's the big deal.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, so we just, I think, I think it's in fairness, I think we'd be, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't, if we didn't give them at least a basic site plan review, something, you know, you you know, it can be you're relatively low key, but it's gotta be something so that primarily so that we have the opportunity to let the neighbors know and the butters know that that's gonna happen.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments on that? I mean, is any, any any other opinions? I mean, I don't. We are bored, we all, y'all gotta say.
I might just suggest that maybe in the future, um, we consider looking at the site plan review criteria where something is going for a special use permit already to to the Z B A. I I don't know whether we need to do a site plan review or not, but that's for the future. And I know that was added to the zoning back in, I don't know, two thousand twelve or so. But I don't know, sometimes I think it can slow things down, but it's just something.
I mean, if do, if I thought there was adequate notification, you know, of all of the people around there, that everybody, so that everybody knows what's happening. And and um, but the Board of Appeals hasn't traditionally um, looked at, they've kinda depended on us to tell them that everything's okay. And then they make their 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 Board of Appeal decisions, except for the ones, of course, that as we talked about, that go in ahead of us and 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 before they come to us, so they can put it on, and we can't deny them for it.
We wouldn't be able to deny the use. It would, it would purely be conditions of, you know, of approval, but.
Yeah.
And and this meeting would be before their meeting, so whatever we approved would have, would, I mean, it would rely on the Z B A then two days later issuing the the special permit, so. But anyway, okay.
Yeah.
Of course, they may not, they may not issue it right away. They may hold it off. They got what, twenty days or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Might not issue it at all if they don't, I mean.
That's correct, that. That's correct, and I, you know. The Z B A seems to get their.
I know they're gonna ask us what we think of it. I mean, they're gonna send it to us anyway and say, what do you think? And we'll say, well, we have no idea what's going on. Right?
Yeah.
Because they'll just go get, if we don't do it, if we don't do something, what happens is they'll 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 get there, it'll go into the water of fields, they'll send us a little notification, says, oh, what do you think about this? With no pictures, no, no, no site plan, no.
Of course they will. They're gonna send that to us anyways.
And since there isn't a plan and they don't provide us with a plan, they won't have a plan, so there we are again.
That's true. I don't think they would ask for a plan because the applicant wouldn't be concerned about the fact that she has to produce a plan if she already had to produce one for the Z B A. It would be the same plan, so you're right.
But but is there a, well, but what the but the plan for the Z B A, what will it be? I mean, it'll just say, this is what we're doing.
A lot, it's gonna be a lot of lot of plot plan.
It should be a full, it should be a site plan. They do have, you know, requirements for submitting a site plan, but they don't, they don't ask for them, so.
They don't get, they don't, right, they don't ask for them, so we don't, and cuz if they did, they give it to us and we never, they never give it to us. You see what I'm saying? I'm just concerned that there'll be a, that, you know, we're gonna get called down for missing a step.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and I, you know, I mean, we can keep it simple, but we really need to do it.
All right, I will pass that along to the applicant. Um. Like, that was all that I had for my own update. I will let you know as soon as I know the date for the select board meeting for the public hearings for warrant articles, um, but I don't have it yet.
Okay. Okay, anybody got anything else they wanna bring up on the new and old business or are we good?
We're good.
Okay. And I guess we will uh, close the meeting. But tonight, thank you all for coming tonight and spending your time here. Hopefully, we'll make some progress on some things.
Good night. Sleep tight. Everybody go see Debbie tomorrow to sign off.
Chris, just so you'll.
I'll send out a text.
One of the things that they were asking is what what have we done for Conkett Street? What has the town done for Conkett Street? And I would like to, I didn't, I I I should have pointed this out. We did a lot for Conkett Street, the planning board did, by changing it to the I O district. Because before that, they had three or four more trucking companies than they have now.
Oh, I know.
And all those big trucks are coming down slowly, but surely we've eliminated a lot of that.
Oh, yeah.
In the past years, we've we, this this board anyway has done something.
They, yeah, they, but they're not, that's not what they're looking at, Warren. The town has not gone in there and and you know, change, work down that street and made it better and, you know, the physical, the physical street, not the planning of the street. Not what, you know.
I understand that. My point here is that when they bought their house, that was heavy industrial.
Oh, I know.
Okay, okay, we've, we've had this discussion with people before. You buy a house in a heavy industrial district.
Expected.
That's right, and then we put the I O in there and got rid of the heavy and made it better, cleaner, better uses, so we did, we we've done, we've done good for.
Oh, I'm not saying we haven't.
So. So, and I just.
Yeah, I wasn't even, I wasn't even looking at those, the 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 neighbors right then. I was just you know, just thinking of what that creep is gonna be, cuz I already know that the the way the uh, the horse farm was just all all up on the, when they came to us that he was all, you know, happy to endorse them, because if it's next to him, then he can just do the same thing. You know, and it just gets farther and farther and, you know, do you want that?
This town has had accumulating any kind of commercial property, you know, it's it's a little difficult to to just to uh.
Yeah, well, we we lose, we we lose the stuff that could be, I thought, could be much better, which would right along Main Street. Especially when the sewer comes in.
Yeah.
It would have been much more valuable, and that's where we've lost it all, except for, except for the uh, the Berry property.
Yeah.
And, you know, and heck, can you imagine if Bruce Wheeler had gotten the Berry property twenty years ago, what that would be now? You know, that would be a great mixed use community right now, cuz he would have built.
Yeah, yeah.
You know? Cuz he had already, he had already taken, learned, you know, from us.
With that, though, Chris, that that turns out to be that mixed use that he would have built would be sitting there half empty right now. See, one of the problems that 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 we're having with some of the projects that we're looking at, like the Abacus project and all that in in the zoning that we have in that area now, where even if each one of those property owners individually decided to put something up that had uh residential up top and and retail down the bottom, which is what we require now with that overlay.
Yeah.
Um, but those stores will be empty, they sit empty because all the other ones up there are empty. They can't rent them. There's no, there aren't that 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 was a good idea, uh, maybe ten years ago, but it's not panned out.
I bet you if there were stores over over in that area with the residents, now you've got your own population right away. Problem is, is you you, it's hard to change people's way of doing things. They're in a car. I don't go towards Main Street. I go towards Middleton most times, or Linfield. It's the way it is. I'm on, I'm on the east side of town.
You can go to one place and there are ten stores there and you could, yeah.
But if you walk downstairs, you gotta walk and use the stores at a right day. You don't have to get in your car. That's the difference.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Apparently, that's not, that has not been successful, as successful as they would hope it would be in many of the places that they need the residential, but there's no takers for the stores.
Yeah, well. So. But who knows?
That's coloring the way some people look at the projects that they're currently dealing with.
Yeah, but they're still building, they're still building these huge buildings, Warren.
The reason, though, that we, that when they talked to the contractors, they were like, well, you know, you know, when and with the advocacy thing, that they just really didn't seem to be terribly interested in that as proposed. Now, you start adding more res, more and more residential, the more residential you add, the more interested they get.
Yeah.
And you eliminate the stores and now they're really interested. So, but so, I mean, you know, the whole concept that we're work, that was, that we started out with isn't, is for some reason or other not panning out in this particular timeframe.
Yeah.
If it'll change in the future or get worse, I mean, you know, I mean, with the zoom, you know, which reminds me, Danielle, that that the new, the new zoning laws that the state put out, do we have to, we have to incorporate those into our zoning bylaw?
Not yet. Um, so I had a preliminary discussion with town council about it. John Eichman let me know that right now, there's nothing for June, um, that has to be done by that point. Um, it's, he started to look at how our bylaws might need, or how our zoning might need to have um, different wording based on the um, uh, you know, the different numbers required for each type of boat. And he said that we actually had very little that would, that he thought would need to change in our zoning. He and I are gonna do a more thorough review of it, but a lot of these um, new provisions have to do with areas that are um in in higher density
Right.
developments in certain proximity to T stations and and when you look at all the. And and when you look at all the actual criteria, we don't trigger many of them. We trigger some of them, but we don't trigger all of them. So he actually thought.
A little bit, we talked, we talked about having it, uh, doing it in October, because we weren't, you weren't, we weren't done yet.
Yeah, but there.
Something on that too, so.
There's, yes, and there still might be very little for October, because he really just didn't think that our setup was such that it, we actually triggered many of those.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I did discuss with him, um, the overlay for Park Street. And he said that it didn't meet the criteria for, um, a simple majority vote, that it's still, hi- his recommendation would be that it would still be a two-thirds vote.
Yeah. Well, I think both of any of these zoning articles, even the Conca Street one's gonna require a two-thirds vote.
That one will, but housing articles now.
Yeah, they don't.
Are, but he didn't think that this one, because it was not a high enough density, and it didn't meet the other criteria. He said, he said it's a gray area, but his recommendation is that it's a two-thirds vote still.
Yeah, 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 cuz it's not big enough.
Yeah.
And some other things, yeah.
Crazy. Only the state can do stuff like this.
That's right.
If it's big, you can have it for half vote, but if it's small, you need a two-thirds vote. Sounds like that's backwards to me, but that's, that's the way it is.
No, it's not about the size. It's about whether it meets smart criteria. So higher density, near, a little transit, and a few other things.
Right, right.
Put it in a different category, so.
Right, right. Okay, uh, so, uh, if that's it, then we're all set. And thank, I think, oh, again, thanks, y'all, for coming tonight, and hopefully we made some headway on some things, so. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.